All right, let me call the meeting to order this evening. This is a regularly scheduled, called and convened Greer City Council member held this evening, September the 24th, 2024. We start this meeting with a public hearing, so we are going to take care of that first before we go into the rest of the order of our business this evening. So with that, we have a public hearing scheduled. This is for an alley closure at 133 Tremont Avenue. This is in consideration of a request for closure of an alley in the city of Greer. Mr. Mayorman, do you have additional information for us in that regard, please, sir?
No, sir, I have no additional information. The only thing I would add is that you do have the draft agenda we were unable, or, excuse me, the draft ordinance, we were unable to include it on the agenda in time. It will be considered at the next council meeting.
Counsel, your packet contains information in regards to Ordinance 41-2024, which would be the ordinance of the closure of an alley in the city of Greer. You've got accompanying maps, also affidavits of publication, and a letter from Duggan and Hughes in that regard, and documentation that it was submitted in time. With that, then, we will take this under advisement. We will reconsider this matter at... This will require action. We'll reconsider it at our next meeting. So I guess we can hold it over, or is it necessary?
What we can do is just have a public hearing, but any action taken on the ordinance will be on your regular agenda for the next meeting. So if it's okay, we'll just do the public hearing tonight, continue with that, take any feedback, but there will be no action on the ordinance this evening.
Okay. With that, then, we'll proceed with the public hearing. By show of hand, is there anyone here that would like to speak to Ordinance 41-2024, an ordinance authorizing the closure of an alley in the city of Greer? If so, raise your hand. I'll ask a second time. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak this evening to an ordinance authorizing the closure of an alley in the city of Greer? This is Ordinance 41-2024. No one indicated, so this will be the last and final call for anyone to speak regarding the ordinance number 41-2024. This is an ordinance authorizing the closure of an alley in the city of Greer. Speak now or forever, hold your peace. No one indicated that they wanted to speak in regards to Ordinance 41-24. I will call the ordinance to a close at this point in time. We will take action at our next meeting in regards to Ordinance 41-2024. With that, we will move to our regular meeting. Councilman Jay Arrowood will lead us in a pledge of allegiance and an invocation for counsel. If you would like to join us, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to this land, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you for letting me be a part of this council, be a part of this city, and to help lead your city that you have blessed so much, and I thank you for that. As we move forward in tonight's business and as we go about our day-to-day business and lives, I pray, Lord, that we'll never forget that you are unwavering. You're there with us, regardless of where our mind is or where we may find ourselves. You are there, and all we need to do is call upon you. I ask, Lord, that as we make decisions, that we will use the wisdom and the guidance that you have given us, and that all of our decisions will benefit our citizens, our entire city, and it will glorify you. In your holy name, I pray. Amen.
Counsel, in public forum this evening, we have three that have requested to speak this evening. Since it is only three, I would only ask that you be cognizant of the time that you need to speak this evening, and that you would recognize that there are others that would care to speak as well, too, and we will leave it at that. So with, oh, just as a matter of direction, when your name is called, if you would, come to the podium. Once there, state your name and address for a matter of record. With that, Billy Vaughn is the first person to appear tonight. Mr. Vaughn? Excuse... Okay. With that, then, Amy Harvey.
My name is Amy Harvey. I reside at 788 Brockman-McClyman Road, Greer. I'm also representing the remainder of my family, which are at 780, 784, 792, and 945 Brockman-McClyman. We respectfully request a rezoning of our property from its current agricultural residential classification to traditional family zoning. While valuable for farming or cultivation, this no longer aligns with our growing needs. We have lived within a five-mile radius of where we currently live our entire lives, whether it be on the corner of Highway 14 and 85, or where BMW sits now. We have owned this property for 26 years, so we've watched a lot of growth and a lot of changes over our lifetimes. As a family, we have decided to relocate where this type of lifestyle is still feasible for us. This was a tough decision for us, and it took many knocks at our front door to make it happen. When you talk about rezoning, the question is asked, what are the benefits? Much-needed housing due to the constant growth in the area, along with maintaining the current community character. The traditional zoning aligns with the existing character of the surrounding neighborhoods and provides a welcoming environment for new and existing residents. We understand that rezoning can sometimes raise concerns like traffic, noise, road conditions, and the number of EMS and fire departments that we have. As far as traffic goes, we wait at the end of our driveway like everyone else does. With the exit ramp for Interstate 85 being so close to Brockman-McClyman now, you'll never be able to avoid traffic when things are backed up, no matter what stands on this property. As far as the noise and all the dump trucks, we are less than a mile away from BMW's new division on Freeman Farm Road, and again, what sits on this property will not fix the beeping and the noises that come from that direction. The rock quarry has been located on East Howell Road for 50-plus years, so those dump trucks have been working those roads for a while now. As far as our roads and the number of EMS and fire trucks that we have for this area, this is pretty much out of the hands of the city of Greer. This is a county and even a state issue. When those two entities see that the area requires new and improved roads, roundabouts, and additional EMS or fire trucks, that's when it'll happen. I just want to assure the council and our neighbors that any development on our property will be done thoughtfully and in compliance with all city regulations. They aim to create a residential space that complements the community's character and standards. We respectfully request your consideration and support for this rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Hinson?
Yes, sir. Brian Hinson, 784 Brockman-McClyman Road. I had a PowerPoint I was going to show y'all concerning traffic. We had kind of, me and my wife, had kind of done our own little traffic study, but my poor IT skills has even baffled the city of Greer folks. So I apologize for that. So no PowerPoint. So, you know, I told my sister, when she was writing down stuff to speak about, I said, "Amy, speak from the heart." So with no PowerPoint, here we go. Amy's already told you how long we've been there and how long our grandparents had been there. My papa purchased that land from Eddie Runyon 20-plus years ago. We've been around a long time, and like Amy said, we really prayed and pored over this decision to leave that property. That's the last we have of my grandparents, and we are very sentimental people. We hold on to things. I definitely hold on to things. I'm borderline hoarder, so, you know. When the property around us started getting developed, and I'm referring to the Green Farm, the Greens, we grew up with the Greens, know them very well, Mr. Nelson, and the land behind us was Westmoreland Property. That was my grandma's best friend, Miss Westmoreland, Miss Hazel. You know, as those families got approached to being able to sell, the first trip they made was to my mama's front door to say, "Peggy, these developers come, and they've offered us money, and we're going to sell." And folks, crowd, council, my mama looked at them and said, "Congratulations. I'm happy for you. Take this money and go rebuild and do something better for your family," because they didn't want to live in a, around a neighborhood. Okay? So we sat there, and we sat there because we didn't want to leave again, and I was probably the one holding on to Titus, holding on to Papa's memories and that kind of things. And as the neighborhood started closing in, you know, I hate to use this term, but I heard some other folks talk about their quality of life. Well, I noticed my quality of life starting to deteriorate, and that was in the form of, because I'm a part-time farmer, you know, and growing houses ain't my thing, it's growing cows. And so, like Amy said, a prayerful and heartfelt decision was made for my family to sell, and it was to sell to, for BMW to roll on with some big concrete buildings. We went through that when I was a senior in high school. It's when BMW came to Greer, and they asked us to move, and we did. So, you know, we came to council, and that got voted down, and we weren't here raising cane, throwing tomatoes, or doing nothing. It's crazy. My mama said, "Okay, family, it wasn't the Lord's time. It wasn't in the Lord's timing for it to happen." So to close, we're back here again. I feel like that we have a developer who wants to develop the property and be profitable. Nobody wants to develop something and not be profitable. I think they want to be profitable. I think the zoning they're requesting is exactly the same as the house developments that sit around us, and so, you know, I think it's time to go. And I understand the traffic woes. We live them every day. And my PowerPoint was about traffic. We took a little video of traffic at 8:00 in the morning, traffic at lunchtime, and then traffic at 5:30, and it was mild. It was mild, but I am not, I'm not a hypocrite, or I'm not crazy. The traffic there gets bad, and it gets bad. It's directly correlated to 85, and the traffic is on 85, the backups and the delays. But if you notice, folks, and I know y'all have, it's not just Brockman-McClyman, it affects, it affects Highway 290, it affects Highway 101, it affects Brockman-McClyman, it affects Pelham Road. And so, you know, I have no control over any of that. I don't think none of us does. I mean, 85, you're taking your life in your own hands if you go down at around 5:30 during the day. So that's all I wanted to tell y'all tonight. Sorry about my video not working right, but that's from my heart, and I feel out from my family's heart, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, contained in your packet this evening is the minutes of the council meeting on September the 10th, 2024. I'll entertain a motion to receive those minutes.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, I would like to ask you to join me, specifically Mr. Bettis and Mr. Arrowood, if you would, come to the front with me. We have a special recognition this evening.
I'd like to invite John Holland, if you would, to come to the front room with us, please, sir. This is a proclamation that barely, and I mean barely, scratches the surface of what John Holland has done for this city. And it is, it is rare and unique that we have people like John that have served in so many positions and have been an advocate for this community all your adult life, I guess. And we wanted to take the time to thank him tonight for all that he has done for the city, and like I say, this does not come anywhere near playing to depth and the reach of what he has done and the people that he has touched through the years as he has I wanted Mr. Bettis to be here with us. First sentence of this proclamation says, "Whereas John Holland was first appointed to the City of Greer Planning Commission by Councilman Riley Bettis in 2004..." A little bit long. Further down, there we go. We're going to talk about his fire service very briefly, and that's kind of why I wanted Jay up here as well, too, so y'all could tell some stories about Mr. Holland. Maybe we better say that then. This proclamation is issued today, and it says, "Whereas John Holland was first appointed to the City of Greer Planning Commission by Councilman Riley Bettis in 2004. Whereas Mr. Holland, Mr. Holland served the City of Greer Planning Commission versus Vice President from 2007 to 2019, and is Chairman from 2019 to 2024. Mr. Holland's service on the City of Greer Planning Commission occurred during a period of incredible growth in the city of Greer, with the planning commission agendas often backed new projects and opportunities for the city. Meeting meetings lasting well into the night. Whereas Mr. Holland consistently and carefully made such sure that every person had an opportunity to speak on issue in favor of an action or opposed to it, that the interests of the city of Greer and the City of Greer Planning Commission operated at all times in the professional and ethical manner. Where Mr. Holland's service on the City of Greer Planning Commission coincided with service as a volunteer firm and engineer for the city of Greer from 1988 to 2022, now therefore to get resolved in the city of Greer recognition of John Holland for a lifetime exemplary service to the city of Greer for his impact in promoting transparency in government and fostering quality growth, done and ratified this day by the mayor of the city of Greer and Greer City. Day of September 2024. Let's give John Holland a big round of applause.
In the proclamation, it talks about John being a big advocate of the city, and he is. He, it's all Greer, and that's the kind of people it pays to create such a community and environment that we have. John did, and has always, when he was running the meetings with planning commission, would make sure everybody was able to speak their piece, and that settled a lot about John, and it also settled a lot about our city. As far as the fire department, I served a long time with, and, no, no, it's not that. Anybody who's ever written to me, I can tell you that, they know that I am a nervous passenger. And one of our big, has volunteered, one of the things we did, we would come in, go to the call, we would come to the station, but if we went to the station, it was, okay, we're here, next run is ours. I was a lieutenant, he was the chauffeur, and I would always ask him, when we got ready to go, "Do you know where you're going?" He'd always say yes, except for one time, he says, "I think so." But it did make me nervous, and what's so amazing about that is if you ever talk to him when he's driving, it's nothing like being in the seat beside him. He's yelling at other people and some other stuff, but I would go on. I think so. Appreciate it.
I didn't know who you were back in 2004, that's the honest truth. I'm pretty sure you were recommended to me by, Jay might have had some input, Chief Harvey might have had some input, and Glenn Case maybe had some input, but I've never regretted ever doing what I did, and it's, as they say, it's rare that you have someone that has stuck with it at the end, like, and had the desire to do what you've done, and we certainly appreciate it.
This was totally unexpected. The mayor called me, and he said, "I want to do something for you." I said, "It's not necessary." He said, "Oh, yeah, I've been wanting to do it a long time." So I left, I guess, A was my last meeting. Now, Councilman Mike Barnes, Grand County, asked me about, I serve Grand County Planning Commission, and I've been there tomorrow, and I believe I'll be in my third meeting. It's much different than being here with, I've run it a lot. Well, thank you, Riley, for having the faith in me to put me on. I remember that night, we were at the old Greer High School in Ontario, and I believe there were Vern Smith was in the room, actually. I think Vern was still company. We didn't have a new city hall yet, and all that was still a little worse, and I've got the world with some great staff over the years. Actually, Heather, they do a phenomenal job. This staff is really underrated here with the city. Maryland, I mean, you've got a good crew. Counsel, somebody who's been here a long time, somebody who hasn't been here that long, but it's pretty good to know that everybody is in a cohesive working environment, and everybody's working together the same. Well, the outcomes don't always work out like everybody wants to, but it is all about what's best for everybody in the city of Greer and the surrounding area. My idea is, as I mentioned, I wanted everybody to always have a voice, whether you were in the city of Greer or out of the city of Greer, because it does affect everybody. Great run here in the city, and proud to be able to have a small part in it. Thank you.
We appreciate people like John Holland, and we're thankful that there are those that will give of themselves so unselfishly, and I know his wife is here tonight, and I know that there were plenty of nights she sat home while John was here at City Hall doing business and probably in bed long before he got home, and, you know, I have a special place in my heart for those that serve so unselfishly, and I know how it affects spouses and family and other aspects of your life, and for those folks like John that have given service for 20-plus years, we really appreciate it. With that, we're going to move to departmental reports. They are contained in your packet. You have those with you this evening, and we'll have the financial report brought to us by Ms. Woodruff this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For month-end, August 2024, the general fund cash balance was $6,946,000. Revenues were $1,881,000. Total expenditures were $7,627,000, for a total 1% over budget. The revenue benchmark was under $305,245. Expenditure benchmark variance $509,976, and overall benchmark variance of $815,221. Moving on to the hospitality tax fund, the cash balance ending was $1,551,000. Revenues were $633,904. Expenditures were $99,638. We were 3% above the monthly budgeted amount in collections for hospitality, and a total of 5-year percent over budget collected for the year so far. Moving on to stormwater, cash balance was $2,817,000. Revenue was $31,600, and expenditures were $406,500. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, ma'am. Floor's open. Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayorman, your report, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Couple real quick things. Reminder, the Rail Fest is Saturday, the 28th, from 10:00 to 2:00. This is one of our many popular events that we host this time of year, so come to City Park and enjoy Rail Fest. It's a four-hour event, it's free to the public, and has model trains, train museums, trackless trains, face painting, balloons, and all kinds of good stuff to do on a fall Saturday morning. Reminder that the Benefits and Wellness Fair for City Greer employees is Thursday, the 26th, from 7:30 to 12:00 at the Cannon Center. The city is also hosting a career fair on the 18th of October from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. here at City Hall, which is a great opportunity to explore a career in local government. I do, Mr. Mayor, if you would, I would ask Mr. Deaton to help me out here with this last item and do a quick introduction for council.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Pleasure this evening to welcome and introduce Max Stewart, the new CEO of the Greenville Area Development Corporation. Of course, our relationship with the GADC is strong and fantastic. Max has been on the job now less than 90 days. We've already seen him a bunch here in Greer, know how valuable he finds our relationship and building it forward. So, Max, welcome.
Thank you, Reno. Good evening, Council, and Mr. Mayor, Mr. Administrator, I'm Clerk. Thank you for the time, and again, my name is Max Stewart. I'm the new president and CEO of the Greenville Area Development Corporation. I've been on the job just 81 days, so I came from Florida, so I'm missing a hurricane right now. That's good news for me, but I'm happy to be in the market. Just a real quick background, I've been in economic development for about 15 years now, six and a half at the state level, and then seven at the county level, so I'm very familiar with working relationships with cities and want to help out as much as I can. We've been here a number of times. Reno and I have had a number of meetings, calls, texts, emails, to talk about different things we're working on in the area, and also, we've been here to the city, my family and I, we have three kids, and so we've been downtown in the area, just walking around downtown Greer, Ada Aces, Oyster Bay, Select, you name it, we've been down here now. We live right over in Sugar Creek, so we're really close to this area. So I'm happy to be here. I met Mr. Booker this morning. We were at the BMW Champions check thing this morning, so we had a little chance to chat this morning, but happy to be available to any of you that would like to talk about what's going on in the county, what we're working on, some of the projects. But again, just real quick, say thank you for that. I know you've got other things on the agenda, but any questions, have to answer it, but again, thank you for the time tonight, so.
We appreciate the introduction and the time that you've made to come this evening. We thank you for that and look forward to a long and healthy relationship, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you in the future a good bit. We've got a lot going on.
I hope we do. Yeah, we want to try to do that. So thank you again for your time.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate it, Max.
Thank you, sir.
Council, with that, let's move to old business.
Yes.
Excuse me, on the department reports, I want to urge Council, again, to look at the fire department report regarding EMS arrival times. We've had additions to the category of 30-minute and 40-minute response times by EMS. We've got to do something about that. Mr. Mayorman, I would request that with all our construction projects going on, that before any, before the exterior of buildings is signed off on, that Council would be updated on that. I appreciate it.
Just for clarity, any exterior signings?
Exterior designs?
Just the elevations?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Others. Hearing none. Let's move back to old business. This is only one item under old business. It's the second and final reading of ordinance number 35-24. This is an ordinance imposing development impact fees in the city of Greer enacting Article 4 Development Impact Fees, Chapter 46, Land Development, by creating Section 46-400 through and including Section 46-407 of the Code of the City of Greer, South Carolina. It's related to development impact fees invoking the pending ordinance doctrine and providing other matters therefore. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to hold this item over for another two weeks.
Comes with a recommendation to hold it over for the purpose of discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Booker?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Booker, seconds. For the purpose of discussion, then the floor is open.
Mayor, Council, I've been very clear and remain very clear about the fact that I believe that impact fees are a good tool for us to discuss and consider. That's still my belief. I know we've been talking about it for quite some time publicly. You know, we did just, it's been a little bit less than a month when we actually did begin this process. I know we're very clear on what we want to do and why we want to do it, but it's my, with everything we've got going on and this being one piece of that, it's my desire that we make sure that we give all the stakeholders, all the residents that want to wrap their mind around what this is, why we're doing it, and, you know, review the study to be able to have an opportunity to do so. So that's the reason for my motion this evening.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Airwood, and I'll follow.
Has anyone else besides the Greenville Board of Realtors reached out about impact fees to anybody? The thing that I gleaned out of their information was affordable housing, and that's kind of disingenuous in my mind. If they were going, if the Greenville Board of Realtors or area realtors were really serious about providing affordable housing, they would be lobbying other folks. The price of housing is coupled with a demand for housing, of course. The price of housing is also, there's a direct correlation with the labor and material prices, which has gone through, you know, a dramatic increase. I don't agree with holding it over. I think it really accomplishes not, doesn't really do a whole lot, so.
I've had a few different stakeholders reach out to me, other than just the greater Greenville. Honestly, I think it's fair for transparency purposes, if people want to take a second look and really understand what we're getting ready to vote on. I don't think it's a hard ask just to hold it over for two more weeks, and if they want to do some due diligence and some information finding. Like I said, we haven't had this in place for however many years, so I don't think a two-week delay would make much more of a push on our end. So I think from a transparency standpoint, it's not a hard ask to just ask, let folks look over it a second time.
Much like Mr. Hopper, I'm very prone to act positively on implementing the fees, whether we do it tonight or at a meeting two weeks later, I'm a bit ambivalent about. I do think the one thing that I want to make clear is that the public process of this may have only started a month ago, but this was a discussion with Council at a retreat last spring. So this isn't something that has just popped up in the last several weeks that we're going to take some sort of action on. We've had, we've had a number of discussions, both internally and in public, in regards to this. We have commissioned a study as per state law to develop the ordinance that we have to do in this. We have followed the letter of the law in terms of how we have presented this to the public. And, you know, if there are those that missed it or didn't have an opportunity to see it when it was introduced, you know, we have a process for that, and we have followed that process. So this is for at least this Council and our staff and others, this has been in the works for some time, so just wanted to make that clear. Others?
Mr. Mayorman, would the delay affect any of our pending development right now?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you clarifying that even further. Yes, absolutely. And several folks that I've spoken with, I've made it very clear, this has been something we've discussed in some form or another for several years even, and certainly, like you say, since that retreat, more and more internal discussions about this being a tool that makes sense for us to implement. To clarify even further, Mr. Airwood, I completely agree. You know, when there's not a reason, there's not a really good reason to not get the show on the road. You know, we need to take action and make a decision, even if it's hard or has fallout with different folks that way. And so that's not my purpose tonight at all. You know, again, when I ran the first time for Council and then ran for reelection, you know, in conversations, I regularly told folks, even when, even when we're going to disagree, even when my decision ultimately is going to be one that, you know, you're not getting what you want, I want to make sure that you're heard. And that's the intention here. In answer to your question, yes, I've heard from other folks. So my motion tonight isn't for any one stakeholder, any one resident, it's just in general to make sure, again, this is the feedback that we're getting, and I know we all want to be transparent, we are transparent to the very best of our ability. That's all this is, my intention.
Motion on the floor is to hold this item over for second and final reading at our next scheduled meeting. Any final thoughts?
I just, I don't see who else would have an intense interest in this, other than builders and developers, and they pretty well keep up with stuff like this.
Well, it does cover residential and industrial, too, so we can't, you know, just say builders and developers. It could be...
Yeah, but have you ever known anybody that said, I'm not going to live there because they have an impact fee?
Well, when looking at the impact fee, I don't really think residential's going to be the heavy puller on this. I mean, I think we're past our peak of seeing where single-family was coming at, droves into the city, at least for now. I think it is, the heavy puller is going to be on the industrial and commercial side, where people are going in, want to reinvest their dollars into Greer. And I think it's just fair to try to allow everyone just to see what we're getting into, because when I'm getting calls about it, personally, when I get calls about it, I can't really quantify completely where we're heading, because we haven't established dollars to those things yet. So I think just to give people an opportunity to react is just a fair assessment.
In that regard, Mr. Booker, procedurally, and this is for all of Council, procedurally we are at second reading. For those that wish to, for lack of a better word, spend time vetting this ordinance, we have the ordinance in front of us and have taken the first vote on that. Anyone that would wish to speak to the ordinance would need to do so in public forum, because we've already held a public session for this, which was advertised and held by the planning commission. So we're not, we're not going back through that process, but we will, we will hear petition in regards to public forum. Is that fair enough, Council? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
No.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
With that, then, let's go ahead and move to new business. First item we have before us this evening is ordinance number 34-2024. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Eric Bridwell located at 711 North Main Street from suburban neighborhood to traditional neighborhood. Ms. Stoll joins us for this conversation. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Good evening. This is docket number RZ24-09. It is a rezoning request for 711 North Main. The existing zoning is suburban neighborhood, and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood with the intent of subdividing the property. Here's the aerial. Here's the current zoning map. The zoning of the subject parcel, again, is suburban neighborhood. The green across the street is traditional neighborhood, and the pink is commercial corridor. The future land use is traditional neighborhood, and here are the existing conditions at the site. Once again, the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. The surrounding zoning is mostly residential. Staff recommends approval, and planning commission also recommended approval.
Council, for the purpose of discussion, this comes with a motion from the planning commission. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Could you go back to that last slide, the photograph?
And would you go back either one or two to the map, please?
There previously was a quadplex. I think it burned down a number of years ago.
So the intersecting street is what? I can't...
Well, that's North Main.
Wildwood.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, first reading of ordinance number 36-2024. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of certain properties owned by Peggy Henson located at 780 Brockman-McClyman Road and 945 Abner Creek. Road from rural residential to traditional neighborhood. Ms. Stoll?
Yes, so this presentation is actually for this ordinance and the next three. It is for five parcels at the intersection of Brockman-McClyman and Abner Creek Road. The existing zoning is rural residential, and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. Here are all five parcels and their corresponding ordinance numbers. For the current zoning, the subject parcels are zoned rural residential. The blue and teal parcels to the north are manufacturing and logistics. The orange parcels to the south are DRD, and the one to the west is traditional neighborhood. Any unshaded parcels are unzoned Spartanburg County. The future land use is mixed employment, and here is a photo of current conditions at the site. Once again, the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. There is manufacturing and logistics to the north, and the remaining surrounding area is residential. Staff recommends approval, and planning commission also recommended approval. The applicant is also here tonight and has a short presentation as well.
Okay. By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Okay. There is something to be shown. Is that correct?
Good evening, Council. My name is Dave Craig. I'm a project manager with Material Capital Partners. We're a developer based in Charleston, South Carolina, focused on single-family residential communities. This neighborhood would feature a mixture of single-family detached homes and town homes, about 50/50 split, and our goal in our neighborhoods is to do a new urbanist-style design. What we mean by that is homes with walking trails, fronting on parks with access to amenities. And, you know, example of this is Homestead at Hartness, which we are using the same land planner as. We do not use any vinyl product in our homes. It's all high-quality materials. We want to create a true place for people to live. We are not a traditional production-style home builder. We like to create true places. Here's just some brief example of product that we are building in places like Bluffton, Augusta, Charleston. We've got, like I said, detached product and townhome products. Most units will have two-car garages. We like to do rear-loaded homes that front on parks and open space that are accessed by everyone where applicable. Here's an example of our interiors. Like I said, they're designed to be upscale in nature. Here's renderings of our open space. So this is a project that's under construction now. This picture on the left is an example of a pocket park where you have homes fronting on it. Again, it's not a traditional subdivision with a cul-de-sac, but really a true place that, you know, everyone's going to love. And when we talk about amenities, there will be a clubhouse, a pool, likely a fitness center involved, there will be a dog park, and then walking trails throughout. We have not completed a traffic study yet. We wanted to see what was going to happen with the parcel across the street. We've engaged with the group that completed that traffic study. You know, for us, we're going to have to do what DOT tells us to do. So looking at this land use, it's really the only option that wasn't 10,000-square-foot lots. It was, the next option was to go to 5,000-square-foot lots under traditional neighborhood, which is why we're rezoning to that classification. So we will be working with DOT, the planning staff, to make sure the site works for everyone and that we're complying. And, you know, for us to get a driveway permit to access, we get to comply with whatever intersection improvements that they're going to enforce us to make. Otherwise, we can't break ground without a driveway permit. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Yes, sir. If you're available for questions, if you'll just be available, we'll open the floor for discussion, and if something comes up, we'll ask you to come back to the podium. Thank you, sir. With that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive with approval from planning commission.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open. Floor is open for discussion.
How many homes are planned for this project?
I'm sorry?
How many homes are planned to be built on this priest's property?
Right now, I believe it's six to seven units per acre, so that would be 140. This is about a 20-acre site, so the max in traditional neighborhood is 10 units per acre. That's about 270.
Okay, they don't really have any plans at this time, then, as to what will be built?
Preliminary at this point.
Yeah. I was just wondering how many homes. I know they showed townhomes. How many townhomes? How many homes?
Oh, I'm not sure.
I think they said 50/50 split.
That's right. It's 50/50 split. It's likely six units an acre, so likely 60 townhomes and 60 detached homes.
60 townhomes?
Mm-hmm.
And 60?
Detached homes, yep.
Can you tell more about the timeline that you have in mind on the project?
Yeah, we would complete the traffic study first. That would help inform the site plan. You know, right now, our thoughts are to access on Bootsy Drive and the driveway on Brockman-McClyman. That's for the home now. Once we iterate on that site plan with staff, we will move into civil design and permitting, which will likely be, you know, six to nine months. So in a perfect world, next, you know, July, we'd be looking for a land disturbance permit.
And just to reiterate what I think I heard you say, you definitely counted the cost as an organization regarding the intersection improvements, road improvements, et cetera.
Correct.
Prepared to cooperate with whatever may develop on the other corner, to make sure that what needs to get done gets done for the area.
Yeah, to reiterate, for every project we've ever done, SC DOT does not give their driveway permit, so we don't get a land disturbance permit. So until we make those improvements and they're in place, we have not ever been able to start construction on any other project, so.
So the, and roughly, the idea is, just to reiterate again, about 120 units?
Correct. Yes.
So it'll be a total of 120 residences built on the property?
Yes.
And that will give you plenty of space, then, for the pool and open grounds that you talked about?
Yes.
Floor is open for discussion.
Mayor and council, I'll just say, you know, first of all, thanks, y'all, for being here. I know it's been a long road over the last two-plus years, for sure, and for the whole, for the whole area out there, for sure. There's a lot going on. I've said this a lot in discussions. Much of my district, the folks I have to serve, y'all included, as my constituents, are south of 85. Blessings and challenges all around, for sure. And I know a couple of years ago was a challenging situation for you and your family, stressful in many ways, for sure, with the warehouses that were being requested. It was my position at that time, you know, that the way that the area had developed, that wasn't the ideal use, you know, for your property that way. And at that time, you know, I advocated for some sort of transitional-type project and use that would buffer between the existing warehouses, back toward Interstate 85 and the existing developments. And I just want to say that I think this is, this is exactly the type of use that I, you know, tried to say is probably going to come, if we don't do the warehouses now. And so I know there's, you know, changes perhaps that can be made even, but I think the product looks really good. You know, I know we've expected density there, moving back toward the interstate. And so I support this project as we're hearing it tonight, and appreciate, you know, the words that you shared tonight, and wish you all well as well, moving forward.
Questions? Comments? Discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, next item of, for action, would be the first reading of ordinance number 37-2024. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Brian Allen and Janice Hinson, located at 784 Brockman-McClyman Road, from rural residential to traditional neighborhood. Ms. Stahl?
This is for another parcel. In the same group.
Okay, go ahead. Anything else? Does it come with a recommendation?
There's nothing to add. This comes with the recommendation from Planning Commission.
Thank you. This item comes before us with a recommendation from Planning Commission. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions?
When we were speaking just then, it's the plans for the 120 for all these things, correct?
Yep.
Just wanted to clarify on that. Thank you.
Comments? Questions? Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Council, the first reading of ordinance number 38-2024. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Jeffrey and Amy Harvey, located at 788 Brockman-McClyman Road, from rural residential to traditional neighborhood. Ms. Stahl?
This also comes with a recommendation of approval from Planning Commission and staff.
For the purpose of discussion, this comes with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance number 38-2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, item five before you tonight is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Michael and Nancy Hawkins-Smith, located at 792 Brockman-McClyman Road, from rural residential to traditional. Ms. Stahl?
This also comes with a recommendation of approval from Planning Commission and staff.
Ordinance 39-2024 comes with a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion to receive?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, item number six. First reading of ordinance number 40-2024. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by Durham Kids Investment LP and Jones Kids Investment LP, located at 107 Cannon Street, from commercial corridor to Greer Station downtown. Ms. Stahl?
Yes. So this is docket number RZ 24-11. The address is 107 Cannon Street. The existing zoning is commercial corridor, and the request is to rezone to Greer Station downtown. Here's the aerial. Here's the zoning map. The bright pink, of course, is commercial corridor, and the surrounding zoning in light pink is Greer Station downtown. The future land use is downtown living. Here is a photo of existing conditions. Once again, the request is to rezone to Greer Station downtown. The surrounding and zoning land uses are mostly professional. There's also the Parkview Apartments to the north. Staff recommend approval, and Planning Commission also recommends approval.
By show of hand, are the owners of the property or representatives of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you all. Are you available for questions? Okay. With that, then, we'll turn our attention to ordinance 40-2024. This ordinance comes before you, council, with a recommendation from the Planning Commission. With that, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Comments?
What's the benefit from going from commercial corridor to Greer Station?
So Greer Station removes the parking requirements, and also they will be able to build up to the lot line, so there'll be no setbacks, setback requirements.
Is there any proposals for the property at this time?
They do. And actually, they have an illustration, if we can pull it up?
Would you like to?
If you'd like to come up and maybe describe it?
The existing, which was the spinning jinny, is going to be made into the, excuse me, the food hall would be in the interior of this building. We'd have four restaurants, also a tap house on the interior. The proposal is to take the exterior and take half of the parking lot and make it into a partly-covered, partly-open area for concerts, or for different community events. Very similar to what we did. My group built Vons Food Hall in Simpsonville. And so we have about 200 seats inside planned, and a little over 400 seats outside. There'd be, in the interior, also a small arcade, and the exterior would be covered area and also an area for children and families. And I think in this, if you, can you go to the next?
Sure.
This is aerial view. The stage on Cannon Street, covered area and a children's area in the back. Sort of community seating all throughout, grassed areas, and children also up front near the stage. Show the front. Oops. That's going to be hard to see.
We'll all look sideways.
Yeah. So this is the existing toward the, the site is operating now, opening up the side that goes toward the open area outside to bring some light into the building. Bringing back the old sign that was there for the Opry House. Generally, a lot of landscaping and hardscapes outside to just beautify the whole parking lot. We would keep half the parking lot for parking. We're right beside the parking garage. I think there's 350 spaces, utilizing that parking lot.
Others? Gentlemen, please note, I said we would look sideways, not side-eyed at the project. How about that, okay? Others? Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Council, first reading of ordinance number 40-2024. This comes before us this evening. Have a motion and a second. Further discussion in regards to ordinance 40-2024?
I do want to know, he mentioned the warehouse at Vons, which is in Simpsonville. So looking at the project, it's almost like that, but on steroids. So it's nice to see that he took a concept that's working in another area and said, "Let's take it up another notch," and glad to have it potentially here in Greer.
Others? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, we have no action, we have no items to discuss in executive session. Stand adjourned.